Are you guys all ready? Are you okay to?
Yep.
Good evening. I'd like to call the April 25th School Committee Meeting to Order. We're going to start with public comment. Is there anyone from the public side who wants to speak? Okay. We have a consent agenda. So, does anyone want anything removed from the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I second it. All is in place? It's approved for zero. Reports. We have no students tonight. Any liaison or committee reports?
For me.
Human Relations Advisory Committee meets again on May 20, uh, May 4th, sorry, the Thursday, the first Thursday, if town meeting isn't still going. And at our last meeting, we discussed the ongoing restructuring and reformed an additional restructuring subcommittee. Anybody that's interested in participating is welcome. Seven to nine on Thurs- the first Thursday of every month at the police station.
I have a couple. Um, we, um, we have a school committee liaison to the Reading Community Television, I was gonna say RCTV Board. It's John Carpenter and he recently was appointed to that board as a board-appointed position. So, he can no longer be the school committee liaison. So, we have a vacancy there. We traditionally, in June, look at all our liaison assignments and readjust them. So, I reached out to Phil and Kathy at RCTV and they were fine waiting a few weeks. So, just a heads up, we have a vacancy on the RCTV Board and we will need to fill that, but we can have that broader discussion with all of our vacancies. Also in those discussions, they're planning to come and do their annual presentation at some point over the summer. So, we can expect a presentation from RCTV then. Also, at last night's, um, town meeting, the, we were able to successfully, as a town meeting, transfer complete ownership of the Oakland Road parcel of land to the Board of Selectmen. And so, this is gonna kick off a public process where they're going to look at the best use of that land. There's discussion of selling it. There's discussion of selling it for different uses. And there is definitely some interest in town meeting for open space uses of park or trails or whatnot. So, the one thing that we know is it's gonna be a very public process and the reason I'm bringing it to school committee is that land abuts the school campus. So, I think we have a vested interest in that public process. So, I would encourage us all to kind of keep an ear to the ground and find a way to be involved in that, um, moving forward. And finally, Friends and Family Day is Sep- uh, September, June 17th, from 10:30 to 3:00. Last year, Linda and I manned the booth and, um, I guess I just wanted to feel out the committee on whether or not we wanna do that again.
I think it's a great way for us to have informal conversations with families and parents of young kids. So, I am available. I'll be doing the booth with the Human Relations Advisory Committee too, so.
I should, I should be available. My, I only have, uh, one baseball team this year. Son is officially 13, so, uh, the morning should be free.
I'll be available too.
Wonderful. Well, then let's get a table and, um, we can work out the details of who, I'm also available that day. So, it sounds like we'll have good coverage. That's all I had for reports. I think the committee is good. You think on that people?
Martha Chris-Carroll.
First, I just wanted to publicly thank the families that made a donation to our extended school year program. It's always nice to see that type of generosity and it really helps support our programming in the summer. Last year, we used the funding to bring in a fun, um, program for the students at the end of the program. So, this is just a wonderful, um, donation from these families. So, as you know, we made the decision to appoint Kelly Bostwick as our new Rise preschool director. Kelly has been a team chair in the district now for three and a half years, I believe. She's currently the team chair for Birch Meadow and Wood End. She served this year as our lead team chair and took on a lot of leadership. So, I'm excited to move her into that position to be the director of Rise preschool. She has a phenomenal reputation with our families, with our staff. She also really understands the transition from preschool to kindergarten, which is something we very much need to ensure that that continues to be a smooth transition for our families. So, that's, um, an excitement for us and a great opportunity and, um, we're happy that Kelly is gonna stay on with us and continue to grow professionally. Today, I also sent out, um, an email to families about some of the changes that may be happening in our team chair positions. As we all know, there was a .5 reduction in the number of team chairs and I'm not sure all of our families are aware of that. And so, I am working on what that's going to look like, but I wanted to let them know to be watching for those changes. So, that went out to families today via email. Thursday morning, we are having a coffee and conversation with Rise parents and Kelly Bostwick will be joining that. We sent a notification to those families as well. It's also on my website, um, that information. Thursday evening, we are having a presentation. It's not a CPAC business meeting because it is town meeting. We are having a presentation at 7:00 PM by two of our school psychologists in the district about what their role is and what type of evaluations they do. Because a lot of families have questions about the difference between what type of evaluations we do in schools versus a neuropsych evaluation. So, Dr. Kim Bernazani, who works at Parker Middle School, and Dr. Florence Johnson, who is our district-wide school psychologist, will be the presenters. And they'll be able to answer questions and, and kind of talk a little bit with families, so. Thursday, I'm also gonna be presenting to the Joshua Eaton staff at their staff meeting, so I'm continuing to work with them. I think I'm there probably every week at this point. So, I'm presenting at one of their staff meetings to talk about, a little bit more about special education and inclusion. And then a follow-up will be Monday, May 8th, we're having Alan Bloom, who's a retired, um, professor in special education, along with Adam Hickey, who is our consultant from Landmark, will be meeting with all grade levels at Joshua Eaton to sort of help them understand kind of the IEP process as well as working with students with language-based learning disabilities. And I think that is it for my office. Great. Thanks.
I can give a really quick update, um, just about the Friday before break. As you know, it was an early release day for students. But that all of our staff stayed that afternoon for some in-service professional development time. And that looked a little bit different at each level. At our high school level, um, teachers were mostly engaged in curriculum work by department, especially some of those departments, um, that were working on some of the things about the course or the, uh, level consolidation. So, they're beginning some of that, or continuing some of that curriculum work there. At the middle level, they worked on, um, actually sort of had a collaborative sharing, sort of with an un-conference model. If some of you are familiar with that, where they had sort of, um, ahead of time, um, identified particular topics that people really wanted to dive into and arranged it by each building where they were able to share and give presentations and top, uh, conversations and things around those. At the elementary level, we had several things going on. The two largest ones were the core classroom teachers, grades K through 2, were part of a professional development in-service on the, um, assessing math concepts. If you might remember from a previous, um, presentation we gave about the new, um, common assessment that we're using. So, we're kind of taking some next steps, um, with that. That was done by our math coach, a couple, a couple of our, um, admini- uh, elementary principals. And the grades 3, 4, and 5, um, had an in-service around writing and writing workshop. Both to sort of prepare also for, you know, the coming weeks, but really all of these at all three levels are already kind of looking ahead to next fall and what we need to be working on to be prepared for that. And just really want to express our gratitude and commendations to our staff too, because, I mean, it was a great afternoon. I'm hearing good things from people. The Friday afternoon before break is probably, you know, not the best time. But as we are looking ahead to next year already, it's spring. We don't have a lot of opportunities to do that. And so, I really think they made the most of it and worked hard. And so, that's what was happening in the afternoon.
I have just the one on extended day, so I'll wait to cover that. We'll chat then. We'll chat then.
I have a few items. Wanted to report out to the committee about, um, the religious holiday accommodations and some of the teacher and the student attendance surrounding those holidays. But before I, before I get into the, the details of that, um, it was, it was an interesting challenge this year. And I believe at one meeting, um, Linda Snow-Doxer brought up with, with the, um, the scheduling of the holidays in addition to all of the other activities that happen around April vacation. And this year was a little bit more challenging because of MCAS as well, because MCAS had shifted a little bit. So, we had the scheduling of MCAS. We had some major overnight field trips that were going on, both at the high school level and middle school level. We had kindergarten screening. Uh, we had Arts Fest that was, uh, rescheduled, um, around the, the holidays. And we have, we have April vacation. So, the, the teachers did a remarkable job being able to schedule different classroom events, projects, homework, all of the different pieces around all of these different events that were happening. So, uh, the, the accommodation policy was in full effect and, um, we spent a lot of time communicating to staff and to administrators on, um, what the parameters were and what that looked like and, and talking about the policy. In terms of absences, the, these two religious holidays, Passover and Good Friday, are probably a little bit different than, um, the holidays occur in the fall. Where Passover, you have the Seder Suppers, which are more evening events. Good Friday, uh, some of the, um, religious, religious pieces are not happening until the afternoon. So, I, you're not gonna see as widespread of absentees. I think what we did see because of the Friday before vacation and the fact that it was an early release day, you probably saw, we saw a higher rate of student absences wrapped around the, the vacation, you know, the Friday before vacation. And we did have a, a higher rate of teacher taking, um, personal days for religious observances on Good Friday. When you look at it from last year, when we did have the Good Friday in, in March, it was, um, the attendance rates were much different. But in terms of student, student absences, for religious reasons, they were almost minimal for both Passover. And, um, we did see a little bit uptick in Good Friday, but I think that was more because it was the Friday before vacation. And then with staff, um, very similar, we saw very little staff absences on the Passover, uh, the first day of Passover. And on Good Friday, we did, as I mentioned earlier, we did see a little bit higher absentee, um, for personal reasons, uh, because of the Good Friday holiday. So, that's, that's pretty much the update on, on that. Or if you have any questions on that.
I think your analysis is right. The Friday before vacation would certainly impact it. And I think from a student perspective, it's a Friday before a holiday and it's an 11:00 AM decision.
Exactly.
I, I, yeah.
So, it, I think that did happen.
I suspect next year, when that holiday shifts to March, I think you're gonna see numbers that look like last year.
Agreed. Um, I do wanna report out, we received a memo from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education regarding the changes to the 2017 accountability reporting. As you know, um, we are going, we have this year a new state assessment, MCAS, um, Next Generation MCAS or MCAS 2.0 or whatever. They're calling it this week. Um, all of our schools have now begun the MCAS. Several began before vacation. Uh, I believe, uh, the last school, uh, began today and that was, that was Parker. Right now, the literacy, uh, assessment is going on at the state level, um, for, for all schools. Math will begin later on in May. Um, and then science is at the end of May. But I think what's important to note is, um, the, with the accountability system is because we have a new test and this seems to be the test that we're gonna be having now for a while, is that the accountability system essentially is starting at baseline for this year. And so, there will be no, um, assigning of levels this year for any schools that have a participation rate above 90%. If, if a school has a participation rate below 90%, um, then they will be assigned automatically to Level 3. But no other school is go- or district is going to have, um, any assignment of an accountability rating, uh, this year. So, it's only based on the participation level. Moving forward, this will be the baseline year and starting with 2018, there'll be a new accountability system in place, which the Board of Education has yet to take a vote on what it's gonna look like moving forward. And it is tied into the new, uh, federal Every Student Succeeds Act, um, which the federal government is still trying to, um, translate as well. Because we're also in transition at the federal level with the Department of Education. So, there's still a lot of transition happening at the federal level, which is causing, um, a pause in what the accountability system is gonna look like at the state level. But for this year, this upcoming year, with the current MCAS testing that's going on, there will be no assignment for levels for school, any schools that have a participation rate above 90%.
Does that mean it, what we, what they, the school currently has carries over?
No.
So, there'll be no rating at all?
There'll be no rating at all.
Okay. The other question?
We are gonna receive information, um, from the state, but we're not gonna receive a rating.
The other question I have is, uh, you know, we, we didn't spend a lot of time talking about the, the, would you refer to the MCAS 2.0 or? How does that compare to, I mean, we, we had, I mean, I don't know how many nights of presentations on Park? And our Park vote, and now that seems to gone off into the, into the wind somewhere. And what's the comparison of the two?
So, essentially, the questions that are in the current MCAS 2.0 are very similar to the questions that we've had on Park. The company that designed the questions for Park Pearson is the same subcontractor that's being used by the state. The bigger difference, um, that, that I'm hearing, um, from, uh, staff administrators and, is that there's more writing, which is always a good thing, um, and that we are gonna receive much more detailed information on, um, the areas aligned to the curriculum frameworks. Whereas, um, with Park, they didn't drill down as deep as we used to have with the old MCAS. Teachers used to be able to take the data by each of the curriculum strands to identi- question by question and identify, you know, how many students answered each question, uh, pick, you know, whether it was multiple choice, how many students answered each of the multiple choice, um, how, how the students did on the open response questions, how the students did on the, the longer written response questions. We didn't get a lot of that information with Park, but we're gonna get that information again with this new MCAS.
And with the Park, I know we made it, uh, an investment in technology for that. Is that also applicable?
Yes. So, we're, we're still using, yes, it's an, it's a computer-based test. And eventually, the high school, the high school still is using the, the older MCAS. And eventually, I believe it's in two years, um, we're gonna be going to computer-based testing at the high school as well.
So, will we get, you say we'll get information back from the state regarding, uh, our performance. Will that give us an understanding of where Joshua Eaton is relative to where they have been?
Uh, all of the schools. We'll get information about all the schools.
Correct. But I mean, we'll be able to compare what, where, where they were last year to determine, like, would we have gotten out of a Level 3?
I don't know if we're gonna get that level of information. That I'm not sure.
So, we don't really know?
It may be, but I don't, I don't know that for a fact. I, I think a lot of the accountability pieces have not been finalized yet moving forward.
I've certainly read that they're looking at other components than just standardized test scores as well for accountability. So, I think, I think they, the Board of Ed seems to be moving in a completely new direction.
Can I add to that?
Yeah, please.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, we're, I think we're still a little unsure. I think the actual scores for the, for the tests themselves will have some comparability. You know, we can look back. But in terms of the levels thing, because there's a formula, as you may recall, over the four years and a certain percentage and extra credit points for certain movement, I'm not sure the state's gonna do all that in the same way. So, that may be difficult.
That's, that's what the Board of Ed still has not decided yet.
I mean, just terms of like ELA and math, we can look at the number of students percentage in each category of that. But the rest of that formula might be absent or might look different.
We can also, whatever information we get is gonna be consistent across the district. So, one thing we can certainly do is identify any areas across the district that are outliers. So, that's something we can continue to do.
And we might also get some state average info and things like that for some comparative things, but yeah.
I have a question on this. Um, what's the timeframe for getting those scores? I think it's November traditionally?
I think it may be earlier this year because it's, it's an online component. So, I, I think we're gonna be receiving them more in the fall, September, October.
That'd be great. Cause I, the sooner teachers get it, the sooner and the sooner that you digest it, the sooner we can use it. So, do you have anything else?
Nope.
The only other, uh, report I have tonight, um, I just wanna highlight that recently, our Reading Memorial High School Boys Basketball Team and Girls Basketball Team were part of the Coaches for Cancer fundraiser for the American Cancer Society. And they were, they were part of 200 schools in New England that raised over $200,000. My understanding is what happened is they, they ran, uh, through games. They had fundraisers at their games. And specifically, uh, worked with the American Cancer Society, um, with advertising the, the events and soliciting and raising money for, specifically for this cause. So, I just wanna echo the work of the two teams and Athletic Director Tom Zaya and the coaches for, for putting the time and effort in doing this. And there has been a lot of work over the years by all of our sports teams in raising money to fight cancer. I know our volleyball team, um, has in the past done the, uh, Dig for Pink, um, event every year, to also raise money for breast cancer awareness. So, again, the, it, our high school does a tremendous job raising money for, for this important cause. So, I just wanted to recognize and thank them.
Absolutely. Thank you.
That's it.
I just realized that it would be good to also say, I went to the Elder Services Workshop, um, last week and there were lots of nice things said about the collaborations with the schools, the Joshua Eaton Reading Program that's done there. And, um, looking forward to, they're trying to collect feedback to figure out what good services we're missing, but good services that we already have. And so, looking to, to look for what kinds of programs and collaborations we might be able to do with the schools, with the seniors in town.
That's great. Okay. I think that's it for reports. Dr. Dordie, we had talked about taking the extended day update out of order. Does that still work for you?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're, um, to everyone on the committee, we're gonna take the extended day update and the discussion of the fee reduction outside of order and then we'll do everything else, I think, in order.
For that, we often have, because we have the extended day director here as well. So, we wanted to handle that up in order.
Thanks for being here, Dr. Dordie. Sure.
So, we, this is a follow-up to the discussions we had during the budget process where we were going through looking at the revolving accounts. And this is also addressing some of the audit comments that came out two years ago. So, included in the packet that we sent out is a proposal that we have been working on over the past couple amount, months to look at and address the balances within the extended day program. And what we are proposing to the committee this evening is to have a 10% reduction in the extended day monthly tuition rates across all of the various programs that we run. In addition to that, we also looked at and are recommending to double the current sibling discounts. So, we are recommending that we increase them to 10, 20, and 30% for the second child, third child, and fourth child. So, that the 10% was really to give everybody in the program the discount. And then we also looked at the sibling discounts and are recommending that we increase those as well. And what we did is we looked at the balances over the next three years to ensure that they are coming down. But what we wanted to do was put forth a proposal that one we felt would be sustainable as we continue to look to expand some of the options within the program. We're looking at items we can do with Mrs. Wilson for special education purposes. So, we wanted to put forth something where we would bring the balances down, but that would be sustainable over the next several years. So, we didn't come forth with a discount that we would then in a year from now have to say, ooh, we wanna reassess it and have to potentially increase it. So, we wanted to come up with something we felt comfortable. And what we will be doing is throughout the year and specifically on an annual basis, as we go through the budget process, assess where we are against the projections and make any necessary adjustments in the outgoing years. But we felt this gave us a very good starting point. And we also are monitoring because we do feel there will come to a, a point relatively shortly within the next year or so where we actually hit capacity as far as the number of students within the program. So, we're not projecting a lot of growth in the out years, but that's something we'll also assess to make sure if we continue to see gross, we, growth, we'll need to continue to assess these. So, we sort of looked at all avenues with this and felt that by increasing the sibling discounts would give families with multiple children a great discount, as well as giving all families within the program the discount. So, included, we've also, which is probably a little bit small of a font, but, um, the, the current fee schedule for each of the various programs, it's, I'll call it a cafeteria plan where you can choose which, how many days, what type of program you want, what the current fees are, as well as the proposed fees with the 10% discount. The one item we are not proposing to change is the registration fee because we feel that that is appropriate to continue to charge that because then we do know the families applying for it are seriously applying for it. So, we're recommending to keep that at the current $35 registration fee.
Thank you. Questions from the committee?
I have two questions. In terms of our tuition for this program compared to other programs, how does it compare? And then the second question I have is, um, do we have adequate funds in our revolving accounts for those who struggle to pay for this program but need the services?
Yep.
And so, you know, I'm, I'm struggling with lowering prices given where we are in our schools and wanna make sure everybody has access.
Sure. Um, so, in comparison to other programs, um, so I, when I look at other schools, so for example, um, if you look at Wakefield- so for example, if you look at Wakefield Academy, they allow parents to pick which days they're coming month to month, and they charge by the day. If you look at Burlington, for example, they bus kids from one school to go to another school. So there's different things included in the fees for different programs. Burlington also charges more for kindergarten children versus grades one through five. So you have that piece of it. The other thing I think that you have to keep in mind is what's built into the costs. We do, every Wednesday I offer enrichment programs throughout the entire school year. So in our, our fees actually are, are in line, if not lower, than some of the other schools. We're not exorbitantly higher than anybody else. Our hourly rate is approximately $6.43 an hour, so it's really very minimal. You know, I think it really depends on, you've got to compare apples to apples, and I think that's hard when it comes to these, these programs. As far as financial assistance, the way that we do the financial assistance right now is that we have parents, we have a process, so we have parents apply to the childcare circuit first. And the reason for that is, is to, you know, we have to have some kind of a protocol in place to make sure that, that parents, we don't have an influx of parents just, we've tried a number of different scenarios, and this seems to be the best one to work for us. They apply to the childcare circuit, and they, if they are approved, they may pay a minimal fee for, you know, the, the care and the childcare circuit pays the other portion of it if they're put on a waitlist. They apply, they send a letter to Gail, actually, and requesting aid. We use the free and reduced lunch as the gauge for that. So if they get free lunch, they don't pay any tuition. If, if it's reduced, they pay half tuition. If there are extenuating circumstances beyond that, for example, if there are homeless children, if there are any other types of issues, we go on a case-by-case basis. So a principal may call me and say, we have this situation. At that point, I usually go to Dr. Doherty and say, you know, is, we have this situation? So it's, we kind of collaborate on, is this okay? So we do, we've never turned someone away because of a financial situation. So, you know, we have a number of different ways for families to come into the program.
And we did look at that when we were looking at what we felt was the right reduction so that we can also continue to gauge that to see if that's working into the balance as well. So we did try to look at all of the various scenarios, which is how we landed at the 10%, and then looking at how we anticipate the existing revolving account balance to come down because we don't want to end up in a situation where, for those reasons, we would have to turn somebody away. So we are comfortable that we have all the fail safes in place. Thank you.
So the reduction was pure, purely a result of the audit and not some other reason that?
It was because of that, and we have continued to see the balance increase. And even though we've been adding expenses because the program is so sought after, we're getting enrollment. And we're not able to keep adding more expenses. We've looked at the offsets we're taking, we've increased the offsets because we took a hard look at all the offsets we could take into the general fund. We increased those. And even looking at that, the balance itself was continuing to increase. So in order to address the issue of not having the balance continue to increase, this was the avenue we went down. But it was largely the result of the audit findings and knowing that they will be circling back to see how we're doing, addressing it.
With the reduction in the, in the fees, do you see a situation where you could get oversubscription and have to turn people away? Because it's, because we don't want that either.
Well, it's, it, it's an interesting situation because space, as you know, is a huge problem in the district. A lot of times, parents will say to me, why can't we use classrooms? And it's quite simply because at 2:45, teachers are still in the classroom. So that, part of the problem for, for extended day is we have to, there are some schools that have a waitlist already that we just simply can't, we don't have the space. And so, you know, I've, what we, we're trying to do is figure out other options for that. And at the end of the day, I don't know what those are. Those, they're hard to come up with because of the space. You know, there, there aren't classrooms available for us to use, and there aren't, you know, things like that for us to use. So we're in the cafeteria, and there's only so many kids we can have in the cafeteria at one given time. You know, it, it, it's a little bit different because of the, the ratio requirements and things like that, that how many kids we have in the cafeteria and what's going on in the cafeteria. And, and it comes down to safety, too. You know, we don't, we don't want an out-of-control situation. So that's really, we don't want to turn anybody away, but it's the space issue that's really the, the factor.
So just one other thing, so with, and I don't know whether you can do it or not, and that you probably, probably don't have the answer tonight, but I'm wondering whether we can earmark some of that revolving amount aside for potential capital needs because of the wear and tear that this program's putting on our gymnasiums or classrooms or fields or, are we segregating those costs now or are we just?
To the extent we can, we are. I do, I, I don't know definitively. I would need to look into it. There is also a distinction between whether or not you can utilize revolving funds towards capital purchases. It, that's, typically, capital purchases cannot be funded out of a revolving account. I don't know the specific limits. I would actually want to research that a little bit more. But there is restrictions around what you can actually utilize the revolving accounts for. But we are looking at scenarios if we can. The other part we always have to be very careful of is, so the parents are paying an amount to go into the revolving account for the extended day students. We have to make sure that when we're utilizing those funds, we can actually draw a very clear line to say that we're putting money back into the, the school and it is directly related to the extended day. So we also have to be cognizant of that. And what we will usually do is instances where we can say it's benefiting the broader population, we'll look to try to split the costs to say, okay, we can actually take a, a portion of it and say extended day should do it. But some of those where it might be wear and tear is a little bit harder to say that's fully attributable to the extended day population. So there, it, there, it is, we do have to be careful with it because the regulations around what you can use the funding for are pretty strict.
I think it's certainly something we should be looking at because, I mean, our fields are, I mean, you look at like Turf Two. And I'm not saying you use that, but Turf Two was.
Yeah, no, I know what you mean.
From day sunlight to, to midnight, that those, that's getting used. And, you know, we're looking to, you know, at some point have to replace that. Maybe these are places.
So we do currently take an offset for use of school properties, which does, that does speak right to what you're talking about. We do take an amount for, to pay for custodial cleaning time, and we do take an amount for administrative time. Beyond that, you really can't use it for the, the revolving funds for anything else other than the expenses, the direct expenses of the program. So we do, we do take an offset right now for use of school properties. In which that, a piece of that goes to the town core as well as our school facilities.
Thank you.
Another question that you might not be able to answer now, but I'm wondering if some of the revolving account funds could help offset the cost that prohibit a population of our students who can't access the extended day now. So we have kids that come from Boston for our schools who wouldn't otherwise, because of the transportation challenges, be able to take care, take advantage of our extended day. And having them participate in our extended day would be a benefit for everyone involved. And I'm wondering if that's one of the things you considered in terms of offsetting some of the costs of the transportation to enable some of our Metco students to participate in this program. And it's not necessarily a can you afford the program, it's a logistical issue around the transportation. And I know that the cost for transportation from the Metco budget had become prohibitive, which wouldn't enable participation in the extended day. I'm wondering if that has been considered.
I have not looked at that piece to see if, because we do, I, I think we'd need to look at whether, we need to look at it to see whether or not I could utilize the funds in here to go towards.
The transportation, it'd be transportation.
That group of folks when we're not offering transportation to the broader base. And then it would be multiple forms of transportation because of the start and end time of this, and we actually are running transportation for the bulk of that population. It's definitely something we can explore. I don't have it.
Can they utilize the late bus we have for, for athletics now or, or do we, do we, I assume we still have?
It's only, that's, it's seasonal. It's very limited. It's seasonal.
It's very limited on the, on the late bus as well.
You also can't mix elementary and high school kids on the same bus, right?
Well, we could. There's no legal reason why you can't. No. Legally, you can.
But we can take that as, as a takeaway.
We could certainly look into it.
We can look into it. I don't have a.
I just think it would be wonderful if it could enable our whole student population to take advantage of that, your program.
Yeah.
We can, we can take that away.
Move to approve the proposed reductions in the extended day program fees beginning in the 2017, 2018 school year.
I actually, can I ask a que, we have to.
I just need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, now I can ask. Thank you. So, so I'm, what is the timing that an answer needs to happen on this? Because I'm really curious about the answer to the question. I'd hate for us to cut the funds that might enable. I, I hear you that there's a, a concern about how many people, there's not enough space for more, but that there's a level playing field that anybody could sign up is of interest to me. And so I'm wondering if we have leeway to investigate the answer before we decide to give away the money, or sorry, to, to lower the rate.
They, they need an answer because they're already signing up students for next year. We'll certainly research it and see what we can do.
But once we decide, we vote here, then it can't, then the answer, the decision's made, right?
You're, I think you're making an assumption that the amount of money that we're reducing the fees by would definitely equate to the money needed to fulfill what you're describing, and that's a pretty big leap.
No, no, no. I just want to know whether it's even possible. I have no idea whether it's.
I don't think one would impact the other.
Yeah.
I don't think they've been skinny down to the extent.
No. Well, I don't think one would impact the other. And, and I'm not sure it can be done. I, I, I think we need to research it. I'm, I'm not sure it can be done. So I think that, you know, the, Sandy needs to move forward in signing up people for the program because they need to know what the tuition rate's going to be for next year.
I actually had a question. It's not really a question, but a clarification, particularly for anyone who's watching this at home. Dr. Doxson said something a while ago that was important when a very challenging budget time and the optics of, oh, you're reducing fees. So I just want to clarify for anyone who's watching this, that this program is completely self-funded. So no taxpayer dollars are supporting this. And also, I think you did a very nice job, but I just want to reiterate what Ms. Dowd said. There's a lot of regulation around how this money is used. So you have to charge a fee that covers the expenses, and it has to be directly attributable to the expenses of the program. So this is not money that we could be using in another way, for instance, salaries. I want to make that very clear. And we are, we are limited in that way in how we use it. But I, I think that concern about optics is a really important one that I want to clarify that. Oh, yeah, Dr. Lynn.
Who, who pays health benefits for the full-time staff? Do we offer health benefits for?
Yes, we do offer benefits for full-time staff. And it depends, to be honest with you. I know that it's been researched with the town. You know, I know there's been discussions about how that works because I have some staff that work during the regular school day that work for my program, so they're already benefited. So it, it all depends on how many hours they're working for me and how many hours they may be working during the day. And the combination, they can't go over 40. So they may already be benefited and they may be.
Through the town.
Yeah.
Yes, it would be, and it's the same split that all employees.
How does that work with the cafeteria workers? Does, does the cafeteria program have to sustain benefits? No?
No.
Nope, it's all paid for out of the accommodated costs of the town.
Just a question, the theoretical maximum, I know there's different sites and so forth, but we're up to 600 now. It's grown really rapidly, right? It's 400 to 600 in just a couple of years, according to this memo. So do you have a sense of what the capacity is for the program given your space?
Yeah. What I, so generally, the maximum in the afternoon at the elementary schools is, is 65 kids. Maximum in the mornings, morning program is 45. So it's, you know, it's about 650 kids at the elementary school level. We do not have a lot of kids in the RISE program. So, you know, I base my maximum about 650 kids, basically. And, you know, that really is capacity. I mean, we, we have a waitlist right now at a couple of schools, so we, we have a lot of kids. You know, and, and I think that is probably a fair number, 650.
And that's why as part of this, we feel we're pretty close to hitting that maximum capacity, even, we have the waitlist even without having a reduction in the, in the cost.
And the other thing I want to ask maybe her, Gail or Dr. Doherty, is it fair to characterize this as kind of complying with the law? Right? That, that the reason we're reducing these fees is because we're charging parents for a service, and we can only use those fees for that service. And that if the, the balance that's in these memos, we see the pretty healthy ending balances here pushing over a million dollars. So if we don't reduce these fees, we're in danger of taking more of people's money than we're legally allowed to. We don't want to do that. So I just want to make sure that people realize we're just complying with the law here, as I understand it. We're not spending money by reducing fees, and there's air quotes there, when we're looking for money in other discussions and other contexts, that this is a separate discussion, a separate topic.
To give you just a little bit of background, a year ago, Ms. Dowd's predecessor worked at the town account. This was sort of a two-phase approach with this. The first phase was our expenses being charged appropriately. Why were the balances getting higher every year and exponential growth in the program was the answer, was just it exploded. And if I remember correctly, and Dr. Doherty, correct me if I'm wrong, what Ms. Dowd's predecessor said was that staffing wasn't keeping up. We were getting this explosive growth. So step one was making sure staffing was adequate. So it was actually increasing expenses to accommodate the increased growth. This sounds to me like phase two, which is once you've done that, you've established enrollment is steady and appears to be steady going forward. You've established you have the right staffing and the right resources in place. Only then is it appropriate to look at a fee reduction. So I just want to give you that context.
That's correct.
This is the second phase of a two-phase solution.
And as part of the expenses, we also looked at the offsets that we were taking to make sure the offsets we were taking were appropriate. And as you've seen, we actually have increased those, especially looking at use of school property, the portion that actually goes back to the town as well. So we also, it, that was part of looking at the expenses. So we, we did take a look at that, and this was the final phase of it to say, we, we need to look at the fee structure because the expenses are not growing as quickly, even though we, we have looked to add, especially in the special education side. So we feel that this is the next logical and appropriate step.
And if I'm looking at the ending balance you're projecting in 2020, it's well under a year's worth of expenses. So that feels more reasonable than what we have. So I, I appreciated the three or four-year projection out to see. So I, I appreciated the three or four-year projection out to see that.
Um, have we looked at the rental of facilities potentially? I, I know, you know, it might be logistically a challenge to, I guess, bus kids to a location. I'm thinking like the, the location where the public library used to be. I don't know if that, something like that. And again, the only thing I'm thinking is YMCA's essentially do that. They'll pick kids up.
Right.
Bring them to a site, just throwing that up.
Yeah, it, it, yeah, I know we had, had talked about having something like that because of the growth of the program and so many kids and having waitlists and everything else. Like how do we, because you don't wanna turn people away.
Right, right.
You know, and that is something, you know, and again, I don't, it's all comes back to what we can spend money on.
And part of what we're looking at is proximity of some of the elementary schools to, say, the middle school to say, can we, do we have space at some of our other locations here where we could either provide some form of exercise, walking from school to school with proper supervision or transporting.
Can we walk the kids down to?
Coolidge.
Coolidge.
Yeah.
So we are, we, that's sort of the next phase. We're also looking at some of those options as well. And that might be if we need to do some of that, would we need to provide some form of transportation, which would increase expenses a little bit? So that's, we also, over the past few weeks, have been looking at some of those options. But that also comes with the challenge of staffing it up as well. So we wanna make sure we don't overcommit the program without being able to have all of the appropriate resources in place. So we actually, over the past couple of weeks, have been looking at some of those options.
I, I would understand that the logistics is definitely challenging, but I was just wondering if that was an option or something that had been thought about. So it's, it sounds like you're looking at town-owned buildings as opposed to outside facilities.
Anything else from the committee?
I just wanna clarify, so you, it sounds like there's still wiggle room. You're still looking at what options there are with, if we were to take this down ten percent, then it's not gonna stop your problem solving in order to, um, deal with the space constraints and.
I think we're always open to suggestions, you know, to, with the program. I mean, it, every year we go through different things with the program and how, how can we improve it? And how can we change it? And that's, I think, the beauty of the program and why it, it's hard to come up with an exact, you know, formula for the program too, because we do change it every year. We always say, okay, you know what, we're gonna do this differently. And I think we're always open to suggestions on how we might do something better or, you know, change things. So yes, you know, if you have suggestions, by all means, let me know.
But the challenge with that is we wanna make sure we don't recreate. I'm not saying it's a problem, because this is a great problem to have where your program is sought after. Where we have additional space, we have X number of new students enrolled, and then we bring in all of this revenue, but we build up the balances again because of the expense structure. So we're trying to make sure each of these decisions is also thinking short-term and long-term to make sure we don't address this and then sort of recreate it.
Create another problem.
Right.
Yep.
I just wanted to quickly say thank you for creating this problem for us.
Oh, sure.
For making such a great program.
Yeah.
For great things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I actually wanna echo that. I have loads, I've heard a ton of feedback about the, um, extended day program. It's universally positive. It is so, not only does it solve a need for a lot of families, and again, not at taxpayer cost, it's a fee-based program. It really solves a need for a lot of families, but, um, it's just enormously popular with kids. Kids love it, so congratulations and thank you for the work that you do. Um, and I also would like.
John had had his hand up.
Oh, sorry.
If he's, or maybe not interested anymore, sorry.
Um, the other thing, um, oh, I lost my turn of thought.
I'm sorry.
Any for the vote?
No, I have one more thing to say. Um, positive feedback was the first thing. And the second thing was, oh, this is good news. This, I just wanted to point that out. We should say that this is good news. We are making a highly needed and highly sought-after program in this district more affordable for families. And I really appreciated the approach that you took of lowering the rate for everyone, but recognizing that families with multiple children have exponential expenses and finding a way to double the impact, or not double financially speaking, but you know what I'm saying, make it an even bigger impact for multiple children. So I really thank you for the work that you're doing. Um, anything else from the committee or from the public? Mr. Arena.
Uh, thank you, Jean. Just poking around in the web, this is under chapter seventy-one, the current, um, extended day program.
That's a Ms. Dowd question.
No, this is chapter, this is number?
No, we're not chapter seventy-one.
This is chapter seven.
Again, this is an unscientific search. We just poke around on revolving funds for, for spend, spending on.
I don't think we are.
It appears to be, in some cases, that you couldn't charge capital to it, but you might be able to spend, say, depreciation dollars to replace something. Couldn't buy the asset, but you might be able to take a portion when a tear pro rata of headcount, number of kids in the day or number of kids in a year.
I think it's a great takeaway for further research.
Yeah.
Uh, but we obviously need to make sure. We're looking at the right code of the law. Thank you, Mr. Arena. Anything else from the public committee? Are we ready for a vote? All those in favor? It's five-zero. Thank you, Gail, and thank you so much, really, Sandy.
Thank you.
Dr. Doherty.
Yes.
Do you wanna walk us through, actually, give us a minute to find it in the packet, your evaluation process? We're kicking it off tonight, right?
We are kicking it off tonight. Much earlier, by the way, just so you know.
Oh, I know.
So in the packet, there is a memo that describes the process. And then there is the actual summit of evaluation template, uh, which each school committee member will complete. So first to, to walk you through the, uh, the process. This is the, the final step of the five-step process that begins when, uh, we have a discussion about the goals for the year, the superintendent's goals and the district improvement plan goals, which were approved in November by the school committee. Uh, you then heard a mid-year review, uh, which I believe was in, um, early March, late February, early March. And then this begins the, the last piece of the process, which is the, the summit of peace. Um, this, this process is identical to the process that's done with any licensed educator in the district or in Massachusetts, uh, in, in a public school. The one difference is that the superintendent's is public, um, and the other educators are not. So that is, that is the one big difference. So if you look at the, the memo just very quickly, um, what, and what I'm doing tonight is I'm just briefly going through the process. On May eighth, I will go into it in a little bit more detail and include, um, a lot of the evidence that you have already seen, uh, throughout the school year, at meetings and other, um, means that, that you've received information from me. So what you're going to do is when you take a look at the actual summit of evaluation, so it, it begins on this page here, and I will send this to you in Word, um, so that it's easier for you to, to complete. So step one on this form right here, step one is the goal piece. And actually, what you need to do first, um, is, and this is where it gets a little bit confusing. So that's what I'm gonna do with a couple of meetings in a row. The goals are located, um, on the page that says superintendent's performance goals. And I've already put in the goals for you so that you, um, and this is right from the district improvement plan. So professional practice goal one, um, you can see there the description, student learning goal two, the description. And then there are, there are district improvement plan goal, which is three. And then I also put the four focus area goals on the next page. So we have focus area closing the achievement gap, focus area on literacy, focus area on mathematics practices, and the focus area on social, emotional learning. So, um, you check the boxes, the box one for each goal, um, where you believe the rating should be. Then you go back to step one and then just circle what you put, um, in the other boxes. Okay? Any questions so far? Okay, then the second piece, which is step two, is the performance on the standards. So that goes a couple of pages further. And you could see here where it's the superintendent's performance rating for standard one, instructional leadership. See that there are four levels, ranging from exemplary to unsatisfactory. And then you would check as an individual school committee member, the box that would fit each of the indicators. So you have one A curriculum, one B instruction, one C assessment, and so on. You would then give an overall rating based on what you have put for each of the indicators. So there's an overall rating for standard one. And then you would do the same for standard two, which is management and operations. Standard three, family and community engagement, and standard four, professional culture. Then you go back to the cover page, and then you put what you put on the other sheets than you capture here in the summary. So you check off the box. And then you do an overall rating, which is the, I don't wanna say average, because it's probably the wrong term, but what, um, based on what you put for each of the four standards, you would then look at those four standards and give an overall rating based on the score of each of the four standards. And then you would put your individual comments as, as an evaluator. So each school committee member will do that individually. And that is due, um, by May twenty-second. And then on May twenty, on, starting on May twenty-second to June fifth, um, and this is something that the committee put in place several years ago. I will meet with each individual school committee member to discuss their draft. So you would send the draft to me by the twenty-second into the chair or the chair's designee, whoever that would be. And then, um, based on those individual meetings, the school committee member, uh, can either change their individual summit of evaluation or they can leave it the way it is. And then that would become their final individual evaluation. And then they would send it to the chair and/or the designee, who is gonna compile all the results. That would be sent out, the final compilation, uh, which represents all of the committee's work. That would be sent to, um, the individual committee members and would be part of the doc, the, um, packet for June fifteenth. And then on June nineteenth is when the, the meeting on June nineteenth will be to discuss and approve the, the final report. So the school committee would take a vote on the final report.
That's on June nineteenth?
June nineteenth is the school committee meeting. So all the work is done before then.
Yeah, yeah. And in the memo you've outlined.
And, and that's is all in the memo.
Yep.
I just basically went through the memo with you.
Any questions?
So that, that's a brief, and I'll go into more detail on, um, May eighth.
So we don't necessarily need to get started on our work until the eighth.
No, I just wanted you to see it a couple of times. I know some of you have done it before, but.
Very helpful. Um, and just, I think you said this, but, um, we each do an individual evaluation that does have our name on it and is posted to the web. It's a completely transparent and public process.
It's a public document.
Um, and then the final evaluation, of course, that, that reflects the compilation of the committees is also.
Right.
Mr. Robinson?
I'm just, so these are going, these are just historical documents back to two thousand twelve? I'm looking at an annual.
No, that's part of a public, uh, records request from one of our email correspondents. Sorry. I, I will send you, I will, that's gonna be part of the May eighth piece. I'm gonna give you that information.
Just a question about standardization across the state. When people were interested in how our process is unique to Redding versus standardized across DESI for the whole state of Massachusetts. The, um, can you just briefly highlight, obviously, the goals are, are specific to, to your role and to Redding. But what are the other aspects that are common to all towns and?
This form is a DESI form. So this, every, every superintendent goes through the same identical process.
With the same, uh, rating criteria, but they'll have their own individual goals. Obviously, the focus areas are unique to Redding that we have. They're not.
Correct.
School-wide.
But the indicators and the standards are identical.
And then the, um, the forms that we use are the forms that, you know, the four-step rating process that we have here and this, kind of everybody on the school committee fills out a form and then we collect them at the end. That's a standard process.
It's actually in the regulations.
Right. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
And to give the committee, um, some other insight, in the past couple of years, Elaine Webb has offered to do the compilation for the committee, um, very generously. I haven't had an opportunity to speak with her. She does a phenomenal job, so, um, I will have a conversation with her. That being said, she's currently working with Mr. Robinson on negotiations. And I know she's spending an enormous amount of time here in this building outside of these meetings. So I, um, I'll have a conversation with her to see if she's interested, but I'm gonna offer to do it in her stead. If, if, just for scheduling reasons. So I'll have a conversation with Mrs. Webb, and we, we'll know by May eighth which one of us is doing it. Anything else?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Doherty. Anything from the public? Okay. Maybe we should do the capital plan, 'cause that's the only other kind of financial. The other two look a little more straightforward.
This actually is pretty straightforward also. Under, uh, the regulations on the oversight of collaboratives, the school committees of each individual school district that belong to a collaborative, um, have a few roles. One of the roles that they have is to approve, um, a, a capital fund for a consortium, for a, for a, a special education collaborative, and then a, a capital plan. So what you have in front of you, this is for one of our two collaboratives. This is the North Shore Education Consortium. We have just completed their budget process, just so you're aware. And so as part of their budget, there is, um, for the first time, the need for a capital fund. And you could see the talking points on why there needs to be a capital, capital fund for the North Shore Consortium. Pretty much they, unlike our other collaboratives, the SEEM collaborative, they own most of their buildings, whereas SEEM rents pretty much all of their buildings. So they require a capital plan to be able to, like, we have a capital plan for the town to upkeep their buildings. So they need a, a, a capital fund to be approved. And then you can see the proposed capital plan on the next page, um, that they are proposing for two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-two, in the major areas that are going to be, uh, done, um, in the different buildings. So, um, the motion that's required tonight for the Redding School Committee and all other school committees that belong to the consortium would be doing the same thing, is to approve a capital plan and then the, the establishment of a board-designated capital fund. And just so you're aware, for those who may not know, I am on the board. You voted me on the board, um, of the North Shore Education Consortium. So I attend the monthly meetings. I, um, and so I'm part of the, the other superintendents that approve the budget and, um, the process for that.
Move to approve the capital plan of the North Shore Education Consortium and the establishment of a board-designated capital fund for the North Shore Education Consortium.
Any comments or questions?
I'm just curious, how many members there are?
There are, uh, there are eighteen, and then there's, if you include tri, tri-town, there, there are three. So it's actually a total of twenty.
So, and how many board, how many, uh, members of the board of directors are there?
Eighteen.
Oh, so everybody that's.
Yes, oh, yes.
Okay, all right.
The only question I had about this was answered in your memo, but I do wanna draw attention to it. Um, given the discussion we just had on revolving funds, I was, I was concerned that there'd be a cap, but your memo clearly indicates that this fund will be capped at six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that was the only sort of failsafe that I wanted to see, but I see that it's in here, so it seems reasonable. And the capital needs seem to be there from the descriptions in the memo. Anything else? Are we ready for, are we ready for a vote? Are we ready for a vote? Five-zero. Let's talk about town meeting. I want to end with the last day of school.
Okay.
Seems like what you should end with the last day of school.
Last evening, well, actually, I should, I should back up. If you remember when we went before the finance committee, when we were moving forward with making adjustments to the FY eighteen budget, one of the pieces that was going to be taken out of the school committee voted FY eighteen budget was the hundred and fifty thousand dollars for science. And that was going to be put as part of Article Five at town meeting for FY seventeen. So last evening at town meeting, town meeting did approve a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be spent by June thirtieth of this year to move forward phase two of the science implementation. So essentially, what that means is we'll be able to move forward and encumber the funds for durable goods, curriculum materials, technology, anything that would be directly related to the science curriculum implementation. Primarily, it's going to be in two places, K-2 and the high school. It's this next, this next phase. So we're very grateful for town meeting, for voting on that last night and approving it. And then we can move forward with, with that implementation. Next Monday night is the, the budget for both town and town departments and schools. And so the, the plan is, is that Ms. Borowski will be doing an introduction to the budget. And essentially, the presentation that I did at the finance committee meeting will be very similar to what will be at town meeting. There'll be some minor changes, but nothing significant. And I'll make sure that we send that out to you in advance. What we did last night also, I should back up. What we did last night also at town meeting, and we also did send to, to, through Laura Gem, to all the town meeting members was the question document that has been put together by Mrs. Dowd throughout the entire budget process. We also made paper copies for town meeting members last night at their request. So last evening, town meeting members were able to get the paper copy. And prior to that, if they were on the distribution list, they received the electronic copy. So that, that is all of the questions that have been asked from the very first meeting that we had in January and till, actually, most recently, when we received some other questions.
I know it was an enormous amount of work, but I know a lot of people in the community read the questions and answers and appreciate it. So thank you. Anything else on that, Dr. Doughty?
No, that's it.
I think we're ready for the next motion. It's one of my favorite of the whole year.
Move to approve June twentieth as the last day of school for the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year.
A second. Anyone who wants to argue with the last day of school? All those in favor? Five-zero. Ah, that's exciting. I think that's it for our open session agendas. Do you have anything else, Dr. Doughty?
I do not.
The committee?
No, nothing.
All right. I am declaring that, at this point, an executive session is necessary to protect the bargaining position of the board with regards to collective bargaining.
Move to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and approval of the minutes not to return to open session.
Second.
Dr. Nein?
Second. Yes.
Mr. Plowman?
Yes.
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 Yes. Good night.